Having a quorum present, I call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. The Board would like to welcome the audience and thank you for attending. Viewers may watch Board of Education meetings and Board Committee meetings live at TCAPS.net. Are we live?
We are live, we believe.
Excellent. Live at TCAPS.net/Board. Recorded meetings may also be viewed on demand at the same address. Please rise and join Ms. Parkhurst's 2nd grade class at Cherry No. 11 Elementary in the pledge of the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, Ms. Parkhurst's 2nd grade class. Nice cadets. All right. So we are at the review and approval portion of the agenda. If we have any discussion?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
A second?
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. We're deferring to Dr. Van Wagner for recognitions.
Okay. So tonight's another opportunity. Again, every couple of months, we are identifying Compass Award winners throughout our district. So I know we have some of those folks with us tonight. So when I do call your name if you're here, if you would stand up while I read your name, and then after, done with all those, we'll get all of you together for a photo and acknowledgement from there. So our first recipient tonight is Diane Shaw with Aspie Maintenance Custodian at Central Grade. She's been eight years at TCAP. So it was stated by another employee, when I started at Traverse Heights as lead custodian, Diane was working in the kitchen. When summer came around, I learned that she would be helping doing summer work for the custodial department. I quickly learned that not only is she the hardest, one of the hardest workers I've met, but her personality makes her a wonderful person to be around. She picks up on work instructions quickly, needs zero supervision, and wants nothing more to help people. She loves and cares about every child she meets, and they love her just as much. She is the same with coworkers. She is just an all-around great human, and TCAPS is lucky to have her. Thank you, Diane. Next is Jenny Taylor, TCA, TCTA Bus Driver Aid Transportation, nine years with TCAP. It was stated that Jenny has been a part of the TCAP's team for over nine years. She plays many roles in the district, from a bus assistant taking care of our students, custodian in multiple buildings, doing fingerprinting for TCAP's new employees, and always in past years would help at other schools, whether it's noon duty or special projects. You can always count on Jenny. She is dependable and always willing to help anywhere. She exhibits a cheerful and fun personality that is contagious. Jenny ensures that our students' safety is a priority and expresses great integrity each day. Her willingness to train fellow bus assistants is one example of her great leadership skills. Jenny is not only an asset to TCAP's, but the entire community as well. So thanks again, Jenny. Katie John, Non-Affiliated Support Childcare GSRP Coordinator, one year at TCAP.
So Katie has a true drive and passion to not only excel in her daily duties at our district as our GSRP coordinator, but to help others in any way possible. She started in her role, since starting in her role, Katie has worked hard to recruit new students to our program. She personally meets with each invested family to make sure their registration process is smooth and establishes a strong rapport from the very early stages. Our families feel valued because of Katie's efforts. From jumping into the classroom to offer helping hands, to running curriculum kits to each of our locations, our teachers know they can count on Katie. No matter how much she has waiting for her in the office, she is always willing to go where needed and when needed. It is so important for our boots-on-the-ground teaching teams to know they are supported, and Katie does this through her actions. Thank you, Katie. Next is Kate Berwinkle, TCAA Principal at Long Lake Elementary. So Kate's been with TCAP for 10 years, and it was stated that Kate Berwinkle encompasses all the values of the TCAP strategic plan. She puts students first by making sure all are safe and engaged in learning. Kate is a leader in offering a world-class educational experience by being a role model to all her staff. She arrives early and works in every area of the school, including the cafeteria and car line. She sets the tone for our school day with positive announcements. She is supportive of all of our students and staff members. Kate is constantly innovative in her thinking and flexible in her methods. She is currently researching best practices and shares her knowledge with her staff. Kate has partnered with the Food For Thought to create a school garden and supervises our building as it brings the community together during craft fairs and other runs. Kate expects her teachers to guide students' work to their fullest potential, and she is available to assist as needed. Kate is innovative and brings out the best in her staff. She is a phenomenal principal. It was also said, as the principal and leader of Long Lake, Kate has molded our school into a place where students and staff feel welcomed and supported. Long Lake has become a school that families and staff want to be a part of. She inspires her staff to do their best and motivates students to do their work to their fullest potential. TCAP's is lucky to have a leader as strong and influential as Kate. Thank you, Kate. Molly Steimel, Non-Affiliated Administrator, Transportation Manager, 17 years. So I'll read, Molly is always great to work with. Every time there's an incident on the buses, she communicates well with administration and parents. She works very hard and goes above and beyond to make sure students have a ride to school and are keeping kids safe. Molly has worked tirelessly with drivers, students, and families to ensure a safe, fair, and high-quality transportation experience for all. She's always willing to help educate students and families on bus etiquette and safety. She has inspired her own workers by leading by example, filling in to drive bus when needed. So thank you, Kate, Molly. Next is Kathy Anderson Rogers, a cook at West Middle School. So a part of our FSEA team, she has been with TCAP's eight years, and it was stated that they have worked with Kathy for the past two years. She is the most amazing, hard-working person I've ever met in my life. She always has the best attitude, no matter how hard the day is, and we have a few of those days in our kitchens. Please don't forget that Kathy is also 78 years old, and she works harder and faster than most of us. Kathy is the most supportive coworker I've ever worked with. She is always there for everyone and inspires people every day to be the best person they can be. Kathy loves our students, and she will do anything to help them. She is always positive and encouraging. She is dependable and will perform any job duty assigned to her to perfection. I really hope we consider acknowledging her, is what the employee said, because as a TCAP's employee, she is a great human being, and really words just don't do justice to describe her at all. So thank you. Next is Stephanie Walter, TCAP's Special Education Instructional Aid. Also extended day manager, she's been at Traverse Heights Elementary and nine years with TCAP. So it was stated, Stephanie is an exemplary special education aide, an amazing person. She radiates positivity, energy, kindness, and unwavering support at Traverse Heights. Her vibrant presence creates a warm and inclusive environment when every student feels valued. With boundless enthusiasm, she not only meets many individual needs, fostering a nurturing space where growth and self-confidence flourish, she also helps lead the way after school during extended day. Her efforts are unmatched. Stephanie contributes in so many ways to our school, mainly by supporting our students to staff to ensure a safe and welcoming environment. Stephanie helps care for students in the most challenging situations and does so with a smile on her face. She is attending college, working full-time, leading the way during extended day, all while keeping a positive attitude and keeping others at the forefront of her work. She is a selfless person that does anything she can to help others. Her efforts are so admirable, and we are lucky to have her at Traverse Heights. Next is Tom Adair, TCEA Art Education Teacher at East Middle School for 18 years at TCAP. So it was said about Tom, on his own time in the morning, he helps in the cafe for breakfast, he talks with kids, eats beside them, and watches what can go on so he can help. His presence helps all. He is a positive person and positive with students to help them start their day. And again, we thank Tom for his work. So thank you. So those that are here, if you could come up so we can get a picture, and we have a certificate for you.
That would be great.
We know it's been a long day for all of you, so don't feel obligated to say it. We know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to public comment, the Board has set aside this time for public comment. Individuals addressing the Board shall have one opportunity to speak during public comment and shall be limited to three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system. We strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint process, are outlined in Board Policy 0167.3. Stacy, do we have public comment?
Yes, the first speaker is Patricia Sayre.
Yes, it should be on.
I'm Patricia Sayre. I live in Acme Township on Deepwater Point Road. I live right across from the Birth of Us School. Please do not sell the Birth of Us School property to a developer. It has been and can continue to be an asset to our neighborhood. The Birth of Us property was donated to TCAP's with the intention of educating our neighborhood families not to be sold and the monies spent to benefit other schools and neighborhoods. We understand the state's push for workforce housing, but the 1-4 bedroom, 186-unit development being built at the end of our block should cover that need. Dense housing should be built downtown where the jobs and infrastructure exist, not on school property within our neighborhood. When TCAP's chose to close Birth of Us School despite our protests, you broke up our community. It split up our kids to different area schools. Kids make friends with kids they see at school every day. When you closed the school and removed the outdoor gym equipment, you took away their place to learn, to make friends, to exercise, to just be a kid. Just like siblings being split up in a divorce, when you don't live together anymore, you lose touch. Friendships are lost between the kids, and the parents lose friendships and a place together also. A vacant building in the heart of our neighborhood doesn't have a positive effect. It makes us look like a blighted area. It invites crime, vandalism, and just makes you feel sad. It's a reminder of a failed attempt at community. Closing a school destabilizes a community, cripples small business, and weakens property values. The longer it stays abandoned, it appears nobody cares or needs it, but we do. Proposal: Wait and see what the new residents' educational needs are. The Oak Shores Commons should be occupied by this summer, according to the developer. This may increase our neighborhood population by 800 to 1,000 people. We might need a school here again for multiple age groups. A community college extension, a preschool or after-school program, teaching English as a second language, a counseling center, a rec center, a senior center, a health clinic, a community garden, a skating rink. There's many educational programs that could be taught at Birth of Us. With all the new residents, we will certainly need more municipal services too. Fire, police, EMS. The property can be shared for public safety as well as education utilizing your joint-use policy. Bring community back to our community. The $180 million bond that TCAP's is proposing on the August ballot for funding the renovation of obsolete schools is just what we need to reopen the Birth of Us School, to revitalize us and bring our community back together again. Thanks for your consideration.
Next speaker is Tom Mayer.
My name is Tom Mayer, and I'm here to thank you for my experience today at Central Grade School. I'm a volunteer there. I'm a TCAP's mentor, and I learned from Dr. Van Wagner just before the meeting started that every student in all of the TCAP schools received a pair of these glasses to watch the eclipse, and I think that's fantastic, because I got to see it firsthand. The students really enjoying it. Students with pads and pencils and making artwork from what they were experiencing right there in the playground. So I wish everybody could have seen what I saw, because it was just wonderful, and it's a very unusual event. It won't happen again for another 20-some years, and I just want to say, that was great. And I live in Central Neighborhood, and I'm glad that you're going to renovate the school. That's one of the reasons that I volunteered there, so that I could be inside and know what was going on. So thanks for that. Thanks for the glasses, the eyeglasses today. If you did, hopefully there's some pictures in the newspaper from one of the schools, but the kids were just having such a joyful time, you would have enjoyed watching. Thank you.
Next speaker is Linda Solom.
Hello. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to each of you today. My name is Linda Solom. I'm a Certified Substance Use Disorder Prevention Specialist with Up and Earth Prevention, an initiative of Catholic Human Services, and I'm also sit on the Board of the Coalition to Combat Human Trafficking. And that is one of the reasons that I'm here today, to actually just bring to your attention and maybe even give some suggestions that would be helpful in oversight of online sex trafficking that is happening and becoming very predominant in our area as well. We have a mother here today too who will be sharing about her 11-year-old that has been trafficked online. And we want to understand that this is being done by grooming process. There are certain words that are used in that grooming process. The Boy Scouts and Boy Scout leaders are taught to watch for those words and not use those words. And if a student or a Boy Scout goes home and says, you know, my leader said something made me feel uncomfortable, they are actually asked to step away from the position for a time until they can investigate that. I just want to, for everybody to have the main knowledge, to know that sex trafficking, what connotates that is three elements. That's force, fraud, and coercion. And I actually, one of the top roles that I have in what I do in my job is training for sex trafficking, and I also work with drug education with students. So if there's anything you're interested in to have at your schools, or you think would be good implemented on those two fronts, I just want you to know that I'm available and I do have materials. But I wanted to bring to your attention the issue that's arisen with Carol Kaganen, who is the golf coach at West High School. And that there, he was, it is on Facebook, it is public and out in a public domain. It's a recording of this girl's father talking to him to find out if he was actually the one that was online grooming his 15-year-old daughter in the U.P. There's also written out statements of what actually was being transpiring through the texting, or sexting if you will. Forty-seven percent now of the sexting is happening online, and that has become a very high-level concern when it comes to sex trafficking. So I, he is under investigation, so we want to give him that fair and full investigation. So I'm not here judging. I'm just saying that is out there, it's in the public domain. There are parents looking at that, seeing it, and there is concern. This is a girl that's out of our area, but this is a coach. This is a coach in one of our TCAP schools. So my request to you and why I am here today is to make policy real-time. It may need to be added into policy as you go, because this is probably not an issue that has been viewed or looked at. And so I have four quick points. And that would be that there would be an administrative leave while the investigation is pending, that protects TCAP's. Number two, protects TCAP's if someone else comes forward. Number three, to eventually work that into and add that to your policies. And lastly, to decide once there has been a decision from the investigation. That is just best practices.
Sorry ma'am, your three minutes is up.
Okay. And basically, that's all I had to say.
Next speaker is Nicole Hurst.
Hello. My name is Nicole Hurst, and I wish I were here under better circumstances. I'd like to say thank you for giving all the kids the glasses today so they could see the eclipse. That was wonderful. I wish my daughter was one of them, but my daughter, who is 11 years old, was sex trafficked and is in a residential home in Louisiana, which was the closest home we could find for children that have been sex trafficked under the age of 18. She was groomed online by a man who was over 40. It happens here in Traverse City. We live here in Traverse City. She is not a child that runs the streets. She comes home every day. She plays with her sisters. She plays Barbies up until the day that this happened, and her whole demeanor changed. It does happen here, and I feel that the community closes its eyes toward it. I've been called a liar. I've been called quite a few things, speaking out about it, that no, it doesn't happen here, that it happens in big cities, but I'm here to say it happens. My little girl's not here. I can't hug her at night. I can't kiss her at night. I can't, I can't, I can't tuck her in. She's, she's thousands of miles away, and I can only talk to her three times a week. I think a good alternative or a good suggestion would be to have classes, maybe after-school, for parents to come in and have the cybercrimes unit of Traverse City come in and actually speak to parents so that they know what to look for. I know that the police come into the high schools during the beginning of the year and talk to the kids and tell them it's a felony to sext, it's a felony to send pictures, but this is something that needs to be brought out to the parents. The parents are not getting it. I didn't get it. I didn't know. I didn't know that my 11-year-old could be doing this on her little tablet under an icon that had nothing to do with sexting. You look at it and you think it's a game. It's a game a kid is playing. It's not a game. You push on it, it's not a game. I just would like to bring the suggestion that maybe it would be a good idea for TCAP's to have some kind of after-school talks with parents or groupings. I'm not sure what to call them, sorry. But where parents can learn more about what their children know.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Your time's up.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Nicole Hooper.
Hello, Nicole Hooper. Just wanted to kind of piggyback off of a couple ladies here. Given recent events, the cyber attack on our school the cyber attack on our school system, and then the known social media tension of the alleged grooming of the student, is currently under investigation as to perpetrator. These are all very concerning things, and I do agree that they're, you know, given a lot of these situations, this events, it should be a priority of TCAPs to provide some kind of outreach beyond to the students but to the parents, because I can tell you, a lot of parents aren't aware, don't know what to look for, and it's becoming a growing problem, and we all should be concerned about it. So between cyber attacks, where our students' information could have been compromised, their school pictures, links to their Chromebook that could access a camera, I mean, these are all things that could possibly happen. And I know a lot of parents are concerned. So I do would request, given that the current situation with golf coaches pending, under pending investigation, that he also be put on administrative leave. TCAPs must do better, and I know that you're trying hard to do that. We all need to work together to figure out how to do it quick. And I look forward to hearing your updates, I believe, under nine A of the agenda tonight, which I hope touches base on some of these things. So I appreciate your time.
Next speaker is Bill Wiener.
First item is this book right here, and title is "The Queering of the American Child." Subtitle, "How a New School Religious Cult Poisoned the Minds and Bodies of Normal Kids." And I would say normal kids could mean pretty much any of them, but if they're presented with this concept that people are born this way, it's not that just certain kids are corrupting the normal kids, it's that all the kids are being corrupted by this religious belief based on man's word. And the back of the jacket says, "The Cult at the End of the Rainbow. American Children Are Learning a Lot About Sex, Gender, and Sexuality in Their Schools. Schools Are No Longer Teaching Children How to Flourish in Society, They Are Initiating Children Into the Cult of Queer Theory. Once Initiated, Children Experience the Queer as They Adopt a New Cult Identity and Embark on the Destructive Path of Social and Medical Transition." In this book, "The Queering of the American Child," these authors explain what queer theory is, where it comes from, how it got into the schools, and what it's doing to the children nationwide. The Cult of Queer Theory Preys on Children, and it must be understood if we are ever to stop the madness." Second thought tonight is this DVD. It's called "Let My People Go." It's what Moses said to Pharaoh. And it has twofold reasoning. It's free the J-six prisoners and end rigged elections. It talks about the machines being corrupt. It's not just the people going to drop boxes and stuff, the actual machines can flip the votes. They list fifteen reasons why the machines are trustworthy, and every one of them is knocked down in this DVD. And the J-six part shows how these patriots who wanted to speak up against the fraud are being locked up without representation, three years now and counting. So that's the second thing. The third thing is these items right here. Old Earth or Global Flood. It's a DVD I give out, and it, I would present this to the science teachers, any teacher in school, and challenge them. I'll give them out tonight. Thank you very much for your consideration.
That's the end of public comment.
Thank you very much. We will be going to our superintendent's report back.
Okay, so legislative update, things are starting to get a little bit warmer in Lansing as far as budget. Had the chance to participate just towards the end, I had a conflict, but did touch base with our Legislative Association for Northern Michigan. Had a meeting with Darren Camilleri, he's the K-12 Approves Chair for the Subcommittee in the Senate, and really talked a lot about, really what, a real crux of what's starting to come in the budget of the governor's version is the question a little bit about universal preschool versus our retirement system. Essentially, the governor has proposed a six-hundred-million-dollar spend of advancement to create a universal preschool program for all four-year-olds free of charge, but doing that using the money that as districts we put towards the retirement system, specifically for retiree healthcare and specifically with healthcare. In the past, for quite a few years, that's been underfunded, and so as districts, we pay about twenty, roughly twenty-one, twenty-two cents of every payroll dollar we have to send back to Lansing to cover that bill. And what we've learned is that essentially that will, if the preschool program happens, it'll continue to come on the back of us having to fund that with that retirement money. So there's two worries a little bit about if there is an economic slowdown, that now it takes the health program and underfunds it again as far as healthcare, but also that when you look at the proposed budget, it only gives us about a two-and-a-half percent increase, which really doesn't cover our costs just to do exactly what we're doing now for next year. And so I think that there's a real debate happening within the legislature already on that issue, and so we're going to continue to have conversations. The transportation categorical, we feel really good about at this point for this next year, and we think that most of the other things, money, for instance, for school safety, money for mental health, all those things, we anticipate are going to be, right now, the governor proposed a flat line and no increase in those, but keeping what we have, which doesn't allow us to do already what we have. And so we're going to continue to advocate for at least an inflationary increase in those things, just to keep what we have. So it'll be interesting to kind of see, you know, there's been a lot of categoricals that I think people have questioned. Some people in the political world, you call it pork projects, others would call it Michigan Enhancement Grants, but I think there's a real talk of getting down to more nuts and bolts of what we need to do versus some of those company-based things and some of those projects. So we're continuing to keep that. We expect to have a Senate and a House version by the end of April. So we will have the three budgets to base our budget off of. A reminder, we have to adopt a budget by July 1, which means we have to do that in our June board meeting, and we probably won't have that answer of what it actually is until closer to the end of June. So we're going to have to do our best guesstimates, as always, based on those three budgets that'll be presented to us, and so we'll make sure to keep you updated as those go. Any questions on the legislative?
Just a quick question. What are you looking for in terms of inflation just to maintain the level that we have currently of services?
I would guess four or five percent, I would say, probably of an increase from that standpoint, if I had to guess. You know, it definitely would be, give me an idea, in a dollar amount, we're probably looking between two, three million dollars just to maintain, you know, from that standpoint of what we have.
And does that include food services?
Food service is in there, and it's a different fund, the way that's funded. So, you know, our food service fund, from that standpoint, we are fully funded, you know, to have that. But the legislature has said, and they actually did that last year and pre-funded for this next year, to have universal breakfast and lunch across the district. So that's kind of a done deal already for this next year, but, you know, as far as future years, you know, that's different, but that was actually a separate part of the supplemental that was insured, so.
And will they make the preschool also a separate supplemental?
We don't know. You know, that's kind of the question, is where are they going to go? You know, part of the conversation is just trying to, you know, I think that some folks are advocating maybe just increase the economic threshold some versus complete gone, to make sure that people that, you know, really maybe struggle for NSB, that need help with preschool have it, you know, and expand. But the other piece to that, that's hard that we keep telling the governor and her team, is that, you know, finding those certified educators to run those classes is really, really a struggle for everybody. And so without a real strong plan to do that, you're going to fund something that can't happen. So, you know, we think that there's efforts out there that lots are doing of working, we were pushing for Laura to give some flexibility. So for instance, a kindergarten teacher can't do some of those GSRP classrooms that we would like. We would love to see it truly be a pre-K for, you know, twelve system, but right now we don't have that. So it's going to be interesting how all those things intertwine and where this lands, but I think it's losing steam a little, quite a bit from the universal, but I do think we'll see an increase in the economic threshold. But I, you know, we look at it, and we don't know that'll even fill another class for us in this area, and we struggle with the staffing to be able to do that also.
And just for informational purposes, we don't have any students on the waitlist, and they have exceeded the threshold, and so we have one more class that we could fill, and we don't have students on the waitlist, and they've already kind of waived the threshold. So, you know, I think some of the things with it being a four-day-a-week preschool is hard for parents that are looking for more consistent five-day-a-week, and we've shared some of this with the governor's office.
Just to get that information out publicly at the board meeting. Thank you.
I have a question, Dr. Ray. You mentioned the transportation categorical continuing for next year. Have they determined the distribution methodology for this current year yet?
Not totally. You know, we're still waiting for that to get completely worked out. You know, I think they have all the data finally, but MDE, you know, and I will say this, as a person that I worked for the State Department for five years, they are grossly understaffed. I mean, there's about three-hundred-and-ninety people work for the Michigan Department of Education total. And so to have, you know, so few of employees in all these categoricals and all these different things, they're struggling just to get grants and those kind of things out, so.
Do we expect that soon?
Yes. I haven't seen the latest state aid payment if it's at that point, but I'll check on that, but I think, I think it's soon that we'll have that completely, you know, because we got some, but it could have been deducted, it could have been added, and so, for all the conversations I have had and stuff though, it sounds like it's going to be rather close to what we initially thought. I don't know if a plus or a minus, my gut's a little bit of a minus, but I could be wrong, but I think it's going to be right in the neighborhood still.
And we might not fully have that until the August state aid payment, unfortunately.
We may have to sell gift rep from the board.
Hopefully not.
Just a reminder to folks in the audience, if you could make sure you're talking very, very quietly, or if you have to go out to the hall, because it gets hard for us hearing up here. Thank you.
And then district highlights, so a lot of great things. So we have a Student Support Network event. BC Pizza Traverse City is hosting its sixth annual pizza for a cause Tuesday, April 9, and one hundred percent of the proceeds will be gifted to the Student Support Network, which provides basic needs for students age three through twenty. The restaurants open eleven to nine P.M., eleven A.M. to nine P.M., and the offer is good for delivery, dine-in, or pickup. So we thank the folks at BC Pizza and helping out our Student Support Network. Open interviews will take place next, open interviews will be on Wednesday, April 10, from eight A.M. to ten A.M. at this building, Board Administration Building. Many positions require no experience, and we have on-the-job training, and so if you're interested in a, in a job and a career and working with great kids and people, we'd love to talk to you. Robotics, the TC Titans' first robotic team ranked twenty-eight out of six-hundred-and-twenty-two teams in Michigan, and they will compete at the first Robotics World Championship in Houston, Texas later this month. So excited. I was sad to hear that Central didn't quite make it. I know they're on a waitlist, that maybe if there's a few teams that decide not to or not able, that they may still get the chance. I'm going to cross my fingers and hope. We do have that as an approval tonight, just in case, but congratulations to the Titans and all of our kids through the year. It was so fun, you know, not that long ago that we had the West and Central get on the same alliance at our event that we hosted, and won it all and got their banners, so been exciting to see those kids this year, and hopefully, like I said, they both do, but if not, I know everybody will cheer the Titans on in Houston later this month. So Spelling Bee. So we have West Middle School student Reese Miller was recently crowned the Regional Spelling Bee Champion, I think it's the Scripps Spelling Bee, if I remember, that's hosted by the Record Eagle. West Middle School student Julia Martin earned the third-place position for the region. Both students competed against twenty other school Spelling Bee Champions in the regional bee that was held at the City Opera House, so proud of those students. Also, just board policy update, so in April, we will be completing the review and recommendations of the final sections of board policies as part of our transition to Truance Policy Service. As a reminder, we have been sharing the draft policies incrementally to allow board members ample time to review and ask questions. And so again, board members, if you have any questions, please let us know, but we do hope to be able to have those scheduled for a June or July adoption at our board meeting. So, you know, as always mentioned, policies and things in the district, it's just good for us to let our community know that we are reviewing those, and we will be bringing those this early summer to the board. And then also, I want to take a moment, some questions have been asked about Bertha Boss, and so as I have informed the board, that the developer that the board had a purchase agreement with has withdrawn from that offer. And so I've asked Scott Hardy, who the board has asked to represent the district to join me, and Scott, if you, and I have a, you can, yeah, you can stand right there, that's fine. I just kind of want to give an update and get some direction from the board on where the board may go. At this point, we do have a new offer that's been forwarded to the district, and this is from a resident in that area that is looking to do something with it of maybe more of a nature area or a park area or something like that. We've also had some members of the philanthropy community also contact Scott and I to discuss maybe some possible options with that. And so one of the things I wanted to do is make sure to bring forward to the board this proposal, but what I'm wondering is if the board may consider, and I think Scott will be able to give some more thoughts if you have on the author conversations, but I'm wondering if the board might consider giving a little leeway here and holding off on the offer and giving Scott and I the opportunity to try and sit with the gentleman that has submitted this offer, as well as some of those members of the philanthropy community, and see, you know, if we can try and get the wishes of the neighborhood of, you know, what might be good for our community as a whole, good for us as a district with that area, but I think that we need some time to be able to just sit and have some deep conversation with all those to see what we can, we can give. And my intention would be, you know, over the next couple of months, keep you updated, just depending on how fast or slow that goes, and then at some point, you know, if the board wants to take an action, they can, you know, and they can do that, you board, you can do that tonight if you wish. But I would like the opportunity to work with Scott to see if we can communicate with all these folks and see what we might be able to come up with. So, Scott, anything to add to that?
No, I think you characterized it fairly well. One thing I'd like to do is sort of correct the urban legend that's been going around about what happened previously with Strathmore, who was the developer and is developing out there, some other properties. Their original proposal, and then they modified the proposal, was six to eight units per acre, which, there are seven acres out there, so obviously we would have had less than a hundred units that would have been on that site. The ideal for them would have been to follow the master plan for Acme Township of their intended use, and also to provide housing, well, what we would call market-rate housing to what's now called the missing middle market, which is essentially people with eighty, maybe even a hundred percent of the average median income, who just simply don't have enough money to buy a single-family home and would be buying potentially one of the town homes that was being proposed there. So I just want to correct and sort of defend our previous buyer as to what their intentions were, which we never really got a chance to present to anybody. I do think John's right. I had phone calls, numerous phone calls, since the deal fell apart and it was announced in the Record Eagle and the ticker. So there are people who are developers, there are people who are not developers, there are people who are offering more money and less money, and I think what we need to do is to sit down And I think what we need to do is to sit down and vet each one of those buyers, find out what their intended use is. We now have a pretty clear picture of what Acme Township and their residents aren't necessarily going to support. So what we need to do now is to say, okay, what's your use? Based on the feedback we've seen so far, are you still interested? Do you have some other plans for that parcel that would be more appropriate and also might get a better reception? As far as the philanthropy side of this goes, I've talked to the Regional Land Conservancy to Glen Chown, and he is willing to help facilitate a process that would at least um coalesce most of the charitable monies that are out there and the monies that might want to be donated for purchases of property as a park or as a nature reserve or whatever term we're going to call it. Um, but there wouldn't be an active use, but be a passive use of the property. That's just going to take some time to vet. Um, you know, this all just transpired the middle or end of last week. So we kind of know what the Acme residents don't want. Now we need to sort of determine what would fly out there. And I've even got a buyer and adjoining property owner who's wants to use it for their own specific purposes that wouldn't involve redoing or demo demolishing the building itself, but would sort of reuse the existing structure. So my goal and and I think Dr. Van Wagner's goal and Christine's goal is to make sure that we maximize the value of that property. In order to do that, we're going to have to sit down and vet some of these people who are coming over the transom and asking to to purchase it. And so I would hate to rush. I know you have an offer. Uh, that offer stated explicitly that this is the beginning of a negotiation. So I suggest we take them up on that um offer and we see how long it would take to vet the other options that are out there and whether there are other people who want to participate in this process.
Is the property currently listed as active?
Yes. And I have made a suggestion to Dr. Van Wagner that we increase the purchase price to a million dollars, since that's the ballpark we seem to be playing in right now. And it gives us a little bit of negotiating power. It doesn't mean we have to sell it for that. We could sell it for less if we needed to. But I think there's an inherent value in that property, given its proximity to the bay and the park, that um unless we're just going to convert it to single family homes out there, I think it's worth more than what we're listing it for now, just because we've seen those offers.
So to be clear, based on what Scott's recommendation is, if the board wanted to do that today, it would take an uh agenda, addendum to the agenda. Um, and it would have to be a super majority to add that as a discussion item if you wanted. However, if that's something you don't take, you don't want to take action on, then I I would just kind of, you know, you wouldn't take any action on the offer that's there and give me some direction to work with Scott based on the parameters that I had stated. So.
Any any other questions or discussions?
I might have a question for Scott Hardy, but um to your point, no, I'm not interested in adding anything to the agenda. I actually haven't seen the latest offer.
Yeah, just got it, you know, from that standpoint with the Scott from that, so.
I don't know if any other trustees have seen.
With our internet issues and stuff like that, I think, you know, we've had, you know, with that, but you know, I did pass that on.
I mean, I would trust in the fact that if what you're telling the board is you would like some time to instead of instead of responding or taking um an active motion on this this offer that's on the table, um, then yes, I support that a hundred percent to allow those discussions to continue. I think um when you say a couple of months, it makes me a little bit nervous.
That's fine. If you want a month, you know, from that standpoint to see, I just, you know, to put all those characters and stuff together that, you know, have to, you know, has to happen, you know, it might be a little tight for that, but willing to do that and at least bring an update back where we're at from that standpoint, if you'd like an update in a month, that'd be fine. You know, and and to be clear, I you I I'm not recommending denying, you know, or accepting the offer at this time. I'm not saying to, you know, to not look at it here, maybe next month, you know, after that. But right now, it's just not taking action on it uh until we get the chance to have a conversation in that. But I do want to make sure, no matter what, that this does get presented actually to the board for a decision like any others would. I, you know, the um, I I told the gentleman, in fact, that I would make sure the board makes a decision on it. Um, but like I said, I would like the opportunity to sit down and talk with him and Scott and and maybe uh, again, the the Conservancy and see if, you know, there might be a win-win there.
So are you saying we do need to take action on?
You don't unless you want to raise the price right now of the listing. If you wanted to raise the price of the listing right now, you know, that would be a decision of the board and I would need the board to actually make it a discussion item. Or you can wait till next month and then do it then or but just know that, you know, that you may get other offers, you know, keep coming in here. Um, and and just, you know, the question's kind of where the board stands. If you're really set on on making sure it's more closer to that million dollar offer, I wouldn't want somebody that's thinking, okay, it's still at seven fifty when we saw offers previously of above a million dollars and nine hundred thousand was in there as well. So it just completely depends on what you want to do with it.
So can I make a motion to amend the agenda uh and add a line item E for discussion of the Bertha Voss property?
I would second that.
Is that a yay or nay, or do we have to take a roll call?
We need a roll call vote.
I have a quick question. Once we're, is there more time for discussion because I just had a quick comment?
There is.
Um, so just for historical information, before we listed with a commercial agent, we did have a deal that was more community oriented with Acme Township, the library, um childcare, N M C. So we, I mean, we did go through that process as well, and that deal also fell through. So I felt the need, just based on what was said earlier in the meeting, to bring that back to the attention of everyone that, um, you know, we had that plan as well, and that also fell through.
Right. Yep. So we have a motion on the table and a second. So at this point, a roll call vote would be in order.
Stacy?
Ms. uh trustee Moon Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Um, trustee Humphries?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. So that's.
That was a super majority, so we'll go ahead and come back to that when a discussion item comes, so.
And that's going to where?
Sit down. Okay. Unless somebody had a question, I can answer that.
That will be item E.
So any further discussion of Bertha Voss, you would like to wait until that time and not now?
Correct.
Thanks, Scott.
And that's it for my superintendent's report.
All right. So thank you. So we're moving on to our board committee reports and discussion. So we will start off with um trustee Moon Moore for curriculum committee.
Uh, yes, so we uh met on April the second at eight thirty here in uh this room. Uh, there was no public comment, uh moved on to our first procedural item. Uh, we approved the meeting minutes from two twenty-seven. There were no changes, so those remain as posted. Uh, the course catalog, there were no changes to the course catalog. Um, uh, and the other next procedural items was item was regarding the social study curriculum, and this was added under discussion for the full board. Uh, and the 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 last item were the field trip requests. So three were approved to be added by the curriculum committee, and they're added to the consent calendar tonight. Um, moving on to informational items, so we had a guest with us uh at our curriculum meeting, Robin Smiley, who is with the Big Brothers, Big Sisters um organization. She is the school liaison of Northwestern Michigan, and she provided an overview of the school-based program. Um, this is where uh student or teacher mentors are matched with students. Uh, she actually shared, and I'd encourage anyone that's listening, uh, to watch the curriculum committee meeting. She shared some very specific stories about some uh mentors um with some specific um students of ours, uh, really heartwarming and and you can really, she shared a lot of what that program has done for our kids. Um, so that was wonderful. And then she also shared some statistics. So um all eleven of our elementary schools um have this program within within the building um buildings. Um, the twenty-one to twenty-two school year, there were twenty-six kids that were served. In the twenty-two to twenty-three school year, there were fifty kids served. And in the twenty-three to twenty-four school year, there were sixty-nine kids served. Um, in addition, in twenty-three, twenty-four, there were ninety-five kids uh being served in the after-school programs and weekends. So um, great, great job with that program. Um, the next uh, the next informational item was regard to the curriculum pilot update. So uh, Ms. Jones Morgan provided an overview of the English Language Arts, the K through five curriculum adoption review. Um, this review had already been underway. It was started in the twenty-twenty-three school year, and it had to be expedited because there was um Heidi, actually Heidi Mountley Scodak, had secured a two-point-seven million dollar grant from the state. But one of the grant requirements um in order to access the full two-point-seven million, uh, you needed to be able to land on a curriculum decision by June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four. So what originally was a three-year pilot got bumped up to a two-year pilot. Um, and again, shout out for Heidi for securing that grant, which is really unheard of from what I've I've understood. Um, so uh, there was an extensive screening process that had been done with curriculum, the curriculum adoption committee. This involved principals, teachers, reading specialists, um, reading coaches, and they narrowed narrowed the selection to two um, two different pilots. Um, they knew that the journeys, which is what our uh K through five had been using, was not meeting the reading curriculum goals. So those um seven vendors were reviewed and they narrowed it down to the following uh two. The first one is called C K L A, which is Core Knowledge Language Arts. Um, this was described as like the Costco or the supermarket uh program, which is basically an all-in-one, like a one-stop shop. Um, it's very well respected and it focuses on both strands of of the those reading um strategies, I guess. So the word recognition strand as well as the language uh comprehension comprehension strand. So again, it's called um C K L A. The second is a combo of the following. One um part is it's with the ninety-five percent group, which it really focuses on that word recognition strand. And the second part is called wit and wisdom, which focuses on um both those strands, um the word recognition as well as the language comprehension. So both options are great. Uh, a lot of success out there that, of course, this committee has been reviewing and researching. Um, they're bringing teachers in to do a deep dive into both of these because the pilot has been sped up so much. So um, the goal is to come back to the curriculum committee by the end of May to make a recommendation um so we can get it on the June Board of Ed meeting uh meeting agenda. This will probably come through finance, too, um, obviously because of the cost there. Um, then we also had a update with a special education update with uh Ms. Palmaville, um, where several pilots that have been taking taking place since November, um, three that uh were discussed. So a K through five math uh pilot, it's called Pilot of the Bridges. Um, six special education teachers uh have been piloting this program, and it's for tier three instruction. Um, the second is a K through five writing pilot. It's called Step Up, is it Step Up to Writing? My notes were a little bit wrong. Okay, Step Up to Writing. Um, again, this is for tier three instruction. And then the third is a six uh sixth through twelfth writing. Um, and they're in the beginning phases to review Step Up to Writing. So um, we had a good update regarding that, and this will allow ultimately our special education teachers to use the same curriculum throughout T caps. Um, and then we are supposed to have our board learning series, which we always have. And um ironically, the learning series was supposed to be on A I, artificial intelligence. Um, this obviously because of our system and network issues um that, you know, happened last week, that that we postponed that. All of our tech team um was busy trying to uh get us back up and running. So again, shout out to the tech department for all their hard work there. So um, and then we had a bunch of celebrations. Um, we covered a couple of them, but just a couple to highlight. Um, Kyra, uh, a welcome to Kyra Brazel. She's the new administrative assistant to special education as well as the curriculum and instruction department. Um, March is Reading Month, so that that was a celebration. Um, author Doug Stanton visited West Middle School to uh to an E L A class. So that was great to have a a very well-known author visit one of our um schools. Um, Michigan History Day, there was a competition. Um, another celebration was Central High School government students participated in a mock congress session. And then uh lastly, uh, no, one more. Um, there we also had a thank you to a community group called Moms on a Mission and Friends in Recovery. They presented at East Middle School. Um, so just shout out to to that group. Um, and lastly, Traverse Heights had a vocabulary parade and uh featured a student who had won principal for the day. So um, that's definitely some highlights. There's some cute pictures of that student serving at the principal's desk and very, very cute. So um, those were the celebrations. I think I've covered everything. And uh, our next meeting will be Tuesday, April thirtieth at eight thirty here in the morning, or here at Boardman, right?
Correct.
Last meeting to be here and then we'll transition. So anybody have any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to board finance, Andrew Raymond.
All right, the uh board finance and operations committee met on Thursday, April fourth at eight fifteen A M. Uh, we did not have anyone from the public, so there were no public comments made. Uh, we kept our prior previous committee meetings as posted. Um, and then we moved right into bid services and purchases. So um, as trustee Moon Moore mentioned, uh, several of these first ones came through the curriculum committee. Uh, the first one was for an A P government purchase. Uh, this was for a five-year extension of the current A P government curriculum. Um, this is for an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars. Uh, that does include a ten percent contingency, and it's being funded from the ESER funds, uh, a combination of ESER funds and curriculum funds. Uh, that's on this evening's consent calendar. Uh, the next curriculum purchase was for A P World, uh, A P World History, I guess, maybe. Um, so this was for a six, another six-year extension of the current A P World curriculum um for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. That also includes a ten percent contingency. Those contingencies are really in place for changes in enrollment. So those are both elective elective courses, and so just to allow for some fluctuation for enrollments. Um, the A P World uh curriculum is being funded for uh solely from ESER funds um and is also on the consent calendar. Uh, the next two items were for elementary social studies. Uh, the first item is for K two, uh, K through two, um, and is a two-year uh purchase from Scholastic Classroom Magazine. Um, this was for an amount not to exceed eighty thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars uh being funded from ESER and curriculum funds. Uh, the next item was for the three through five grades, uh, same thing, Scholastic News Magazine. Um, these two individuals had been placed on this evening's discussion uh calendar, so um we'll discuss those more when that we get to that point in the meeting. Um, the next item was a capital project. Um, and so this was to uh add an additional restroom to the G S R P uh wing at Long Lake Elementary. Um, this was actually a uh add-on from an earlier project that um we didn't do at the time, but the um builder kind of honored that add-on price, and so um we're going to do that now. Uh, so that is for an amount not to exceed seventy-four thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars uh being funded from childcare funds and G S R P funds. Uh, that's on this evening's consent calendar. Uh, the next item was a facility vehicle. Uh, so this is for a, uh, I believe it was a van, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, yep. So this was for a van purchase from Longhamer Ford in Owasso, uh, not to exceed forty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars. Uh, that is being funded from general funds, so our white fleet vehicles have to be funded from general funds. They're not bond eligible. So uh, that's on this evening's consent calendar. Uh, then we moved on to our normal uh capital project updates. Uh, currently, we have uh the bus wash, which is, I believe, nearing completion. Um, so some photos of that online, uh, some also some photos online of the uh two innovation and manufacturing centers, both at Central High School and West High School. Um, the print shop is currently undergoing renovations at Saban for that move. Um, and then uh just one other thing, the West Athletic Complex ribbon cutting is going to be May seventh at four P M. That's what I have on my calendar. Um, so hope to see everyone there. I think they're using them already, but we're doing the ribbon cutting in May, so. Um, and then Dr. Van Wagner gave his finance update, basically the same update that he gave us all this evening. Um, so that was the finance update. There were no other items discussed. We adjourned at nine oh nine. The next meeting is May second at eight fifteen, also at Boardman.
Questions? All right, moving on to board exec committee, I'll get that report. I'll, I'll. No couple comments for the items. Thank you. We went straight to procedural items. For the draft committee meeting minutes from February 9th, they stood as posted with no corrections. We then went on to the Social Host Responsibility Proclamation that had some updates made to it by Beth Pack and Holly Byrd, and that has been moved to the discussion section of tonight's meeting. We then discussed the staff appreciation. Special recognition is May 6th through 10th, and it will also be discussed later tonight. The, just kind of a proclamation that Stacy Hosack is now the Board of Education Recording Secretary. We then, Dr. Van Wagner then reviewed the agendas for both the April 8th meeting for tonight and the upcoming study session on April 22nd. Then we moved on to informational items, which Dr. Van Wagner has stolen all of my human resources updates from Connie Taylor, but I think a couple of them do. Warrant, thank you, to be repeated. Staff resignations and retirements have basically leveled out, which is good. Vacancies still continue in aid positions, full and part-time, with on-job training. And the walk-in interviews take place this week, April 10th, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. here at the Boardman Building. We are currently reviewing the curriculum and instruction policy. And if any of the trustees have questions or comments to make, you can direct those directly to Connie Taylor. Is that the right section?
Mm-hmm.
Curriculum and Instruction, yeah. That's a big one. And then we had a communications update from Ginger Smith about the board communication that's, bond communication that's coming out. Videos and postcards are being prepared to be sent out to the community with information. And a new newsletter called The Navigator is going out both electronically and with hard copy. No other items were offered for discussion. We have adjourned at 4:29. The next executive committee meeting will be Thursday, May 2nd, 2024, 4:00 p.m. here in the boardroom at, on Webster Street.
If you'd give me, give me an addition, just today we did send out a communication on TC High. Board knows that Lance Morgan, longtime principal, very dedicated to that building, has announced his retirement. And so we did go through an interview process and that, so I'm going to ask Connie to just give a small update on that.
Yeah, we're really, very excited. You know, obviously, those individuals who have a passion for alternative education are, there's not a lot of them out there in the pool. And we were very fortunate, right within our own TC High community, to have an individual who has dedicated the past 20 years to that building, who throughout the interview process demonstrated such a clear understanding of alternative education and vision for that building. So I'm very proud to announce that we have selected long-term teacher Jen Choick as the next TC High principal. She's very excited and we're absolutely convinced she's going to do an outstanding job, picking up where Lance left off, big shoes to fill in just running with that building. And she had, I should share, the staff, 100% of the staff signed a letter of support and submitted it to administration for her selection. And certainly, that was a piece to know that she'll be supported by her colleagues, but she certainly was an outstanding candidate throughout the entire interview and selection process.
Excellent. Yep. It's always nice to have that stamp of approval from your faculty.
And it's her birthday today, so shout out, happy birthday.
Nice. All right. Thank you for that update. Moving on to Board Office Hours, I was the attending trustee this month at Horizon Books and so had a couple of community members from the Bertha Voss area. We had Patricia Sayer, who has already spoken this evening. And then I had a really nice conversation with James Hanna and his wife, and they also live on Deepwater Point. And Mr. Hanna requests that the BOE reconsideres the board, the sale of Bertha Voss to a high-density developer. His, I'm sorry? Okay. Sorry.
No, you're good.
His family has owned land north of Bertha Voss since 1938. He's very proud of the education he got through our school system. He would like to see it remain as a school. Had a very nice conversation with the two of them, and I'm sorry, Ms. Hanna, I did not get your name, but they both attended the University of Michigan, both helped, seemed like putting people into space, rockets into space with their education and became engineers there. Patricia Sayer basically had the same message to give as well about not selling their property to a high-density developer. Then had three students, Kendall Ledford, Taylan Pagel, and Honorae Shore, all juniors at West Senior High. They had many topics to bring up. Phone policy was one of them. They would like the Board of Education to please reconsider the current phone policy, have teachers reinforce the old policy. They would also like to see student representation on the Board of Education, sitting here at the table with us for meetings. We did talk back and forth about the Student Advisory Board. Couple of them had submitted applications and were not selected, so they would really like to see a student here at the board table with us. They also discussed sustainability, that electricity is good, that it's better, but not that much better. It has outages and shortages. What about nuclear? And if TCAP starts that initiative, other school districts will follow suit. They also, and I was not aware of this, brought to my attention, a gluten-free lunch. So in order to get a gluten-free lunch, you have to email a gentleman by the name of Bob by 10:00 a.m. every morning to get a gluten-free lunch. So they would like to see possibly a Google document to be filled out to send in for their gluten-free lunch. And also one that could update the cafeteria on their allergies and dairy-free options as well. They wanted to discuss bathrooms. The biggest inconvenience at West Senior High is that bathrooms are locked at 2:30. It's inconvenient and people are still vaping. Solution, please keep the bathrooms open until 3:00 p.m., hire more security guards, install vape detectors, and students can serve as what they said called an RA, like a resident attendant in college dorms and report other students vaping.
Ooh.
So also locks, there are no locks on the stall doors. They would like locks. Also a facelift to the bathrooms. Paint and updates. More soap dispensers are needed as well. They would also like a Google form to be able to offer more feedback about teachers. And then their final point was books, don't ban books. Books don't make you queer. And so then I had a parent there of two TCAP students. Her main concern was the traffic on Frankie and the parking, that crossing Frankie is dangerous, a catastrophic event will happen. She also would like more transparency and finding out the information about where we are in the discussion with, with the townships and MDOT. She felt like she really had to dig to find out that information and would like an update as to where that conversation is going. She also made comments about gluten-free lunch menus. She would like to have that be more of on like a six-week menu cycle instead of a four-week menu cycle. And invite BOE members to eat in our school cafeterias. Overall, better quality of meals for our students. Everyone who wants a hot meal should get a hot meal. And I think I did mention to her that we do have some lunch buddies from our board members who have gone to eat lunch. And that concludes that report.
Just one point of clarification, the, towards the end here, you said need more quality food? Was she looking to improve the food service or?
Overall, better quality of meals for our students.
Wanting that, or was she recognizing that?
Yes, she was wanting that.
Okay.
She was wanting that.
Oh, that was a lot. You had record attendance.
I did. A record length also as well.
I will tell you, we accepted every student that submitted an application to the Superintendent Board Advisory Council.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought, and I so I pushed back a little bit.
Been some that turned in late.
Yeah. Because, and I said, we had like 55 students on the committee and that it's representation of West and Central.
And TC High went one round.
And TC High, so, but I, listen, I want to commend those, those three young ladies for coming, very articulate, had a nice conversation with them. And they did say, and I forgot to mention this, at the end of the day, these students are very happy at West Senior High. They love BSH, so. So that it was my Board Office Hours. I appreciated everyone who attended. It was a nice conversation. Next Board Office Hours are April 25th, and Trustee Byrd will be in attendance at Horizon Bookstores. All right, anything?
Question?
All right, thank you. Moving on to our consent calendar, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent calendar as presented and without discussion.
I second.
Thank you. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. All right, under discussion, item 9A, school safety, Dr. Van Wagner.
Okay, so obviously, working through a lot last week, and we've kept the board abreast of where we're at with all those situations and continuing to work on. So as we have more updates in those things, we'll continue to keep the board updated. Also, I wanted to let you know, a lot of questions right now about AEDs in buildings. Obviously, we've seen some situations in many schools across the country. In fact, I just had an email today that there's a grant that the Detroit Lions is actually doing, a certain, for AEDs, but we are in really good shape in our district of having AEDs across our building. Our sports have AEDs for fields and those elements, so that's something. Patrick has really been inventorying and auditing all of those, making sure that any software might be needed or anything like that is available. Also, Patrick, along with a handful of other district employees, completed the process to become American Heart Association Heart Server instructors. This will allow the district to utilize these people to certify other employees in first aid CPR and AED use as needed or required by their job duties, such as licensed childcare providers, coaches, and transportation staff. So doing that, again, continuing to look at different things across all of our buildings and processes. And we'll mention, it was brought up earlier about the cyber safety and those elements. We have held multiple sessions, as you know, throughout the year. Some of you have attended those after school in the evenings with local law enforcement, those elements, but that's something we'll keep on doing and hoping to get more participation in as well. Having Patrick work with all of those folks. And just continuing to make sure that everything at this point, Patrick's done a great job in making sure that all the coordination with our local law enforcement when we have things. We did have for Election Day, we, we do have a process at one of our schools that's still a polling place. So we've had great cooperation with our law enforcement on that. And so we'll continue to be vigilant with that as well and appreciate the support of both our county and city as well as state police and anything that, any kind of request we ever make, we have that and, and they are continuing to do training during off-hours in our buildings. Had the chance to talk to TC Police just earlier this week, to be able to see them doing some training in one of our buildings in the evening. So appreciate all that work and appreciate Patrick's work, so. So I have for you on that.
All right. Any questions?
Yeah, I have. Am I on?
You are.
Okay. I would love to, Ms. Hurst came up and sort of gave her comment earlier, and I've heard her story before. It's quite compelling. And so I would encourage Patrick to perhaps reach out.
Will do.
To get some phone calls from her.
We will.
And our local coalition to discuss, maybe sharing that story with our parents, because I think we've, we've discussed before that parents have not historically been showing up to our safety updates, especially considering the cybercrime stuff. And this is a problem, right? And we, we really want this to, to be a safe community. We really want this message to get out there. And I think that, you know, they're, they're doing a great job holding those things, but we're, we're not getting a lot of attendance by parents. And so I think that perhaps putting our heads together with some of our community members who are working on that would be a good idea. You really need a face to the story sometimes and that very brave mother who's going through it right now and who lives here is, is willing to do that.
Will do.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just would add, you mentioned the new newsletter that Communications is planning to do, maybe one of these weekly or monthly, we could have an article for the parents. I know we tend to want to have happy news, but, you know, we only have so many ways to reach our parents and.
And we can do that in our newsletter, other ones just done, I mean, ready to go, but, you know, in our, our monthly newsletter, we can definitely, you know, have some things of resources and those things. And again, I think we can have Patrick work with our law enforcement and looking at resources to have that, so we'll, we'll have a discussion on that.
And who is the, the lady who came for public comments, Linda Salome? I didn't quite, I'm not sure.
Name is Salome, she's here.
Okay, so her organization sounded like another resource partner for us, as a district. Thank you. By all means, feel free to drop off your business card over on that side of the table.
The other one I'd like to piggyback on, and that is, and we've had this discussion a little bit recently, to look at drugs in the schools. And drugs, I think, are another thing that we don't like to talk about.
And I was telling, when Beth and I met just this week, I've had the chance to talk with Sheriff Mike Shea on a program in Upstate, and would like to maybe do a consideration in East Bay Township. They have an officer that has some training and maybe starting a pilot, possibly in East Bay Township, but at, maybe Cherry Noel. We just, we just had this conversation very recently, and so we're going to look at some of those kind of opportunities to start with local law enforcement taking the lead.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Moving on to the Social Host Responsibility Proclamation Resolution. So it's open for discussion.
So I will just remind the board, we brought this last month, and there was a few edits of some additions that was wanted. Again, as was mentioned, UpNorth Prevention, which is one of our, our partners, has many, many years done this resolution. And so we had some few other thoughts that some board members know, both Beth and Holly had the chance to bring input, as I discussed, and so it is here for your review for it.
I guess I'd just like to say thanks to trustees Pack and Byrd for working on this and anybody else that worked on it as well for the revisions. With that, I'd move that the Board of Education approve the Social Host Responsibility Proclamation Resolution as presented.
Second.
I think Beth got that one.
Excellent. All right, Stacy, please conduct a roll call.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
And Trustee Humphries?
Yes, motion carries. Is it appropriate to have Secretary Ballinger read it now?
It is.
Okay. Including the footnote definitions?
Your discretion.
All right, so Traverse City area, excuse me, I'm going to start with, whereas underage use of alcohol, tobacco, and recreational drugs are a problem affecting our community, our health, and our future. There's a footnote that defines alcohol includes but is not limited to fermented beverages such as beer, wine, and distilled liquors. Tobacco products include but is not limited to substances that can be smoked, vaped, or applied, such as snuff. Recreational drugs include but is not limited to methamphetamines, marijuana, and any substance taken with its primary purpose being non-medically-directed mood effects, including methamphetamine, methamphetamines?
Amphetamine.
Sorry, and marijuana. Thank you all. Whereas underage use of, oh, sorry, hold on, going back to the main body, it exacts a significant toll on individuals and families and places a costly tax burden on the community at large for law enforcement, medical services, and other social services involved in the prevention and treatment of underage alcohol, tobacco, and/or recreational drugs. And secondly, whereas underage use of alcohol, tobacco, and/or recreational drugs may have severe consequences, many of which parents and caregivers may not be fully aware. Consequences of the above may include injury or death from accidents, overdoses, and other adverse health effects up to and including death, unintended, unwanted, and and unprotected sexual activity, academic problems, and further drug use. And, third paragraph, whereas, parents and caregivers have a significant influence on young people's decisions about alcohol, tobacco, and recreational drug use by young people, especially when they create supportive and nurturing environments free of these substances. And, fourth paragraph, whereas alcohol, tobacco, and recreational drug use by young people is dangerous, not only because of the risks associated with acute impairment, but also because of the grave threat to their long-term development and physical and mental health. And, finally, whereas, parents, educators, and community leaders who work with our young people every day are our best advocates for responsible decision-making. And, whereas, it is illegal for adults to knowingly allow their underage child or their child's underage friends to consume alcohol, tobacco, and/or recreational drugs in their home, even with the permission of the friend's parents. And, whereas, adults have the authority and responsibility to take steps to reduce the likelihood that their homes will become venues for underage consumption of alcohol, tobacco, and/or recreational drugs. Now, therefore, be it resolved, Traverse City Area Public Schools of Grand Traverse County, a community committed to the prevention of underage alcohol, tobacco, and/or recreational drug use, does hereby proclaim that April 2024 is Social Host Responsibility Month. We also call upon all parents, family members, citizens, homeowners, and property owners to host gatherings responsibly and take measures to eliminate access to alcohol, tobacco, and recreational drug products to persons under the age of 21.
Okay, thank you very much. That's a very important resolution. Moving on to staff appreciation, special recognition, May 6th through the 10th.
Okay, so you may remember that every year, there are many different days that there are different celebrations, but often Teacher Appreciation Month is in that month of, of May, early. So, we like to try and, and really have a recognition for all of our staff. Obviously, we're trying to do many things as we do our Compass Awards and doing those every other month. And so, but this is an opportunity to really, for the board, to give a, a, a special recognition of the work that our staff does. And so, it's my recommendation that the board make this recognition and read this aloud, and just let our staff know how much we appreciate the work they do with the children of this community each and every day, and how thankful and lucky we are to have them working in TCAP every day.
Absolutely. Secretary Ballinger?
Yes.
Okay.
Staff Appreciation Special Recognition, May 6th to 10th, 2024. In alignment with National Teacher Appreciation Week, Traverse City Area Public Schools Board of Education publicly acknowledges and recognizes all staff members of Traverse City Area Public Schools. On behalf of our greater community, we acknowledge the dedication and commitment of all employees, including those who teach, clean the schools, drive the buses, answer phones, design curriculum, enhance technology, coach, direct, communicate, train, hire, finance, and lead the daily operations of our district. Schools are the hub of a community, and TCAP is no exception. Our community takes great pride in the ongoing successes of our students and all programming. It is said, it takes a village to raise a child, and today, we honor all staff of Traverse City Area Public Schools who make our village a vibrant, safe, and rewarding place for children to learn and grow.
You're here. Any discussion?
I just wanted to say, I know the parent-teacher organizations in our elementary school buildings are always hard at work and putting on special events at their respective buildings, and I know the staff really appreciate that.
Again, all up and down across our district of folks that work in every one of our support staff areas, all of our professional staff, administrators, everybody, just first class, you know, all the way through, so.
Was technology included in that?
Yes, it was. Yes. Enhanced technology.
They have earned their keep.
And protect.
I just wanted to say, I think this is the second month we've done the Compass Awards. I'm not sure what the...
Every, every other month.
Is for those, but, I mean, I think you could, those are self-nominated by the, by the staff, and I think tonight especially, you know, you could really see what that meant to those individuals, so I think that's really great that we've started.
And really want to give credit to Connie and her team. I mean, they really brought this, and they're looking at different things and ideas, and so, again, I, I thought when she mentioned it, great, every time we can recognize our people that do great work, and so, kudos to her and her whole team for, you know, work through these, and all of our leaders within our labor groups that also worked, worked with Connie to, to work through in those nominations and, and look at those and, and make the decisions. But, definitely an awesome addition this year that I think everybody's really excited to continue with.
Absolutely.
Dr. Van Wagner, can I add, we have gotten just an overwhelming response of nominees. So, coming up with the, the folks that we actually acknowledge here is a very difficult task, because we have, you know, I think the first time we put out, we had over 70 nominations across all the groups. So, what we will be doing at the end of the year is, regardless of whether or not someone is selected, we will be notifying all of the nominees, and they'll be provided a copy of the nomination form, so they can see what their colleagues said about them, and that they are truly valued, and that they were nominated, even if we don't necessarily get to acknowledge them here at the board meeting.
And, and also, I might add that while we're working, you know, through all the things we're going to do, Ginger's team will be working again on getting stories from people to talk about, you know, staff and publish those in a, in a group. So, we're going to have that as well. This year, it's always great to hear how many of those parents and kids' stories that we hear of the great work that so many of our staff members.
I have a question. Do the nominations go into the personnel files as well?
We do, we make a copy and they go in there.
So, a motion?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the Staff Appreciation Special Recognition, declaring May 6th to 10th, 2024 as Staff Appreciation Week, and the district recognizing all school district employees.
Second. Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Moon Moore?
Yes.
And Trustee Humphries?
Yes, thank you, motion carries. Moving on to bids, services, and/or purchases.
So, this is our elementary social studies curriculum. We had the chance to present this to both our curriculum committee, and it was forwarded on as well as our finance committee. We did have a really strong discussion on the components of what are here, but as well as some other supplemental stuff. So, with that, I think, again, that was talked a little bit in our curriculum update, but I know that Trustee Byrd had specifically requested that this be a discussion item. So, I, I know that we do have some information to follow up on, on what we talked about in finance, but I'll let you go ahead and, and lead with that, and then we can go from there, if you're good.
Sure. So, as we were discussing this item, I had questions about whether or not the Anishinaabe supplemental curriculum created in 2021 was considered during this process. It's called Manduganong, and it was created by Anishinaabe educators, specifically endorsed by every tribe in the state, and was passed in 2021, and it's a free curriculum. And so, and as we're sitting here considering additions to our curriculum after a long-awaited overhaul, the, I had wondered out loud if that had been considered as part of that, as we're spending $190,000 on new curriculum for social studies, in particular, this was for our elementary school. And, so that was not part of this bid, and really, what we had discussed was, you know, well, can we afford it? That was the first question. We said, well, it's free, so yes, we can. And the, the biggest cost would be the time spent, initially, they were saying the time spent put into the, seeing whether it had fit the curriculum, and providing the materials. And I said, well, you know, it was created as a supplemental curriculum to the 2019 state standards, so it should, shouldn't have any problem fitting. And so, that was my question, was, was this considered? Why wasn't it considered? Why does it take me, as the first Indigenous board member, to have it brought up? And that, and that it's something we need to talk about and make sure that we're, we're seeing through, because I thought one of the greatest points that was brought up by Kirsten at our, our meeting was that our school system is behind on social study standards. I made the point that Europeans know more about our Indigenous history here in Michigan than our students do. And so, it's not an issue about inclusion, it's a, it's an issue about restoring, because that is the original history of this place. And as we know, Native American history is this long, US history is this long, here in this country. So, this is something that, as, as people who are here educating students and trying to provide them with the most excellent education, they should not be falling behind other people in the world on our, on knowing what, you know, what our own place is about. So, the curriculum's here, it's been here, it's free, and it's been approved by all of the leading tribal educators in Michigan and in the Great Lakes region. So, that was my point. So, I'd love to hear more about it.
So, Kirsten said that she has to work a little bit more on that, and so, I'll let her talk a little bit about some of the things, again, to reiterate, but also a little bit of new information, so.
So, one, one thing I would, I would clarify is that it's actually a resource manual, so it's not, it's not a curriculum
Right.
that has standardized lessons or lesson design. What it does have is a lot of materials that you can use to supplement your current programming. And so, one of the things that we have been looking at, we have been looking at how to integrate, I gave it the acronym ARM, but it's really the Anishinaabe Resource Manual. And how do we integrate that program and those resources within the context of social studies? I do think it's important to note that at the K5 level, social studies and science are often embedded as part of both language arts and mathematics. So, differently than what you might see at a secondary site where it's much more subject-specific, at the elementary level, the intent is really to have a very immersive curriculum experience for students. So, one of the things that we are very much looking at when we are thinking about language arts, which is a huge chunk of an elementary school's instructional day, upwards of two hours of instructional time is devoted to language arts development, we want to make sure that our language arts curriculum that we're considering has very specific social studies and science standards embedded. And I'm happy to report that both of the program options that we're considering are very much being looked at through the lens of inclusivity, not simply, simply about Native Americans, but all, all diverse perspectives. So, that's been one of the benchmarks or standards that we have been using to vet any program that we have. Specifically looking at social studies, the two programs that we have, Scholastic News and Studies Weekly, I would again say are not intended to be all-encompassing. They are intended to be sort of the primary instructional resource. We know that then the next layer is to add in those supplemental resources, like the Anishinaabe Resource Manual. We have actually a couple of other resources that we're looking at. At the elementary level in particular, I mean, one of the things that was very appealing to us about the Studies Weekly program is that they're very willing to work with local historians, including our tribal communities, to ensure that our materials are very specific to our region, which is actually pretty exciting, because when you usually are working with publishers, you're working much more with national publishers who aren't going to be able to cater to that degree. But Studies Weekly has been very receptive to actually reaching out directly to Aaron Chivas, who is representing the tribe actually at, at the MDE level. He's actually doing some refinement on this particular document to make it a bit more accessible to teachers. So, that is something that is already in the works. The other thing that we have done already has been an audit of our elementary libraries. So, in the resource manual that Trustee Byrd is referring to, there are recommendations for libraries and materials, and we recognize that some of our libraries are lacking. So, that audit has already taken place, and we're already looking at ensuring that some of those materials are in play. The next real, I would say at the elementary level, again, we're really looking to say, how do we cement what we have, ensure that all students have equal access to that primary program? And then, that next layer of work is really to think about looking at our scope and sequence, looking at those opportunities to infuse some of the resource that Trustee Byrd has referenced. Some of the specific, there are some video examples, some article examples, there are some activities for students that we would like to develop into actual lesson plans, and look at implementing those at that K5 level. I know we're only talking K5, but I also wanted to bring to your attention that at the secondary level, that work has been done, there has been considerable effort to look at the integration of local history and diversity into the scope and sequence. So, right now, there's been an effort to do a crosswalk between the standards that are identified from MDE, and looking at our primary curricular resource, and then again, using some of those resources that are part of that manual. So, in sixth grade, I know that one of, several of the government-based lessons in sixth grade, they have already worked on in, in integrating the scope and sequence, into that scope and sequence, some of the resources in this manual. Seventh grade, the standards related to early civilization are where they've integrated the Anishinaabe Resource Manual. In eighth grade, many of the US history have already been looked at, and they're integrating specific lessons. At the, the high school level, they are beginning to look at where they could utilize some of those resources, and the intent is that over the summer, we update the scope and sequence documents, those public-facing documents, so that it's very clear, you know, when it's week seven, and we're working on this particular lesson, this is the resource that we're using. So, I felt, I feel comfortable saying that that manual has been absolutely looked at, something that our, our entire team is very cognizant of. How do we create, take what's there and make it into kind of a teacher-friendly format, but that does take some time. And we are probably most advanced, six through eight, in actually having some ready-made lessons, because the focus K5 has really been on just selecting a primary resource. And in high school, the focus has really been on renewing some of those AP resources, so. Not sure if that's answering, do you have further questions, or?
Um, yeah, do we have timelines on that? Any timelines on, on bringing those things in?
Well, the middle school lessons are actually occurring, so those have happened. And then, the updates to the scope and sequence documents, that all will take place over the summer.
So, that's for the elementary?
Yep. Well, and secondary.
And secondary.
Yep.
By the start of the next school year.
Yes.
You said Aaron Chivas is helping you, that?
Aaron Chivas has actually been consulting specifically with the secondary team to assist in helping really design some of those very kind of place-based lessons. So, he has spent time with our secondary social studies curriculum leaders, and is looking specifically in those, looking at that crosswalk of standard and then resource.
One of the things I might add too, when we did have the opportunity to meet with the tribal council of the Grand Traverse Band, we talked about some opportunities on Indigenous Peoples Days to embed and, and have cooperation from the Grand Traverse Band in that work. So, I have a meeting set up with Aaron and Summer soon, even to the point where we're looking even at some of the language courses, the competency-based, and opportunities for students as well, and so, they were very, very excited about that. And so, that's something else that we're also working at, at having that meeting and talking about already for next year, what can we start to have partnership to bring? What can we start to have partnership to bring some of these things to life within our, our schools?
Yeah, I'd really like to see some of that, the lessons. And I understand, again, board members don't get in the weeds, so I'm trying not to be weedy about it. But it does seem to me that this $190,000 is primarily for some, like a magazine resource that's just a backbone. But I don't really see how it applies into the, the classroom setting. You know, do you see what I'm saying? I feel like this is a resource, but I don't know how dominant it is in application.
Well, I'll help you a little there. Remember when we talked, we've said that there was a real focus on the state level. And, and I can tell you at one time, we only did ELA in math in this district. There was no social studies hardly, at the, at the elementary level.
Well, they had it though several years ago, because I talked to a teacher that said that they really, she felt they had an excellent.
There wasn't a one point, but then, like I said, it got kind of evaporated down. So, what we're trying to do is bring that back.
Right.
And so, this is some of the resources, but I will say this all the time, a textbook is not a curriculum.
I agree with you.
Okay, so you have multiple resources, including a big one of teacher knowledge that goes into the overall curriculum that we have. So, Beth, you always have the ability to look online at our scope and sequence that has the lessons lined up with the standards, you know, lined up with our assessment of all those. That's something that, when I walked into the district, we didn't have that. And so, that's something we built over the last couple of years. So, now it's time to refine that again. And so, these are some opportunities we're taking to build more resources in that. But, but again, it's collectively making a curriculum, when there hasn't been much of a curriculum there and resources in the past.
And I think the other thing that we discussed at curriculum was that PTOs are funding some of the Scholastic News that are being utilized in some buildings.
And some don't have them based on the PTO.
Equity, exactly, then that's really what we're talking about.
But, but I really want to stress this, I think this is exactly, and please don't let me speak for you, but I think that what you're trying to say is this needs to be a resource included just as much as those other ones, is what needs to happen. And so, that's collectively what we're trying to do, is build those resources. And so, we're going to continue that work to build on those standards. And if the resource isn't necessarily in that manual, is there a secondary resource, including people, to come in and help us with those teachings and that learning?
And I, and I do know that there are more up-to-date things happening all the time. I forwarded to you probably last year Melissa Isaac's number. She's, she works with the MDE and specifically doing all of that work. And in fact, has reached out on several pieces of new curricula, things that they're creating, they continue to create for schools. So, even this Manduganon is, you know, getting a little bit older now.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's why I'm like, hey.
Holly, did you have, did you have any hand in the development of the ARM?
Um, no, not specifically.
You didn't? Okay. Yeah, I'd, I'd really like to, and you know, I'd be glad to look at whatever you have online. That's two-dimensional, but yeah. And I, I think, you know, I, I, I agree with Holly that the Native American information definitely needs to be there. But I also think we need a broad spectrum. You're going to have to have the French in there, and you're going to have to have the English in there, so that you can see how the values, where they came from.
And again, the key, the key part is, is we have to meet our state standards. And that's what dictates that. But there was work that was done, that those things were embedded in the state standards within that manual. That work was done by our State Department of Education.
How much?
Oh, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I was going to say, how about this? Whenever there's news in this department with the district's assessment of K through five, or I guess it's really K through eight, social studies, that it go to curriculum. And ideally, if Trustees Byrd or Moore, or Humphreys were absent, then Trustee Byrd could substitute and be at the table for that discussion, since we can't have a majority of trustees at curriculum. Since you are on finance, I just think that would be beneficial for, for everybody to really dig into the details on this at a curriculum committee meeting. If that's possible to line up with your timeframe that you have in mind for social studies curriculum.
And I feel confident, you know, I mean, I am not from Michigan, but everything in Michigan has a Native American connotation or name or so. I mean, I know.
The whole country is Native American, so it's your place too.
But the Inishinaabe Resource Manual is for Michigan.
Right?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right.
So, thank you for further explanation, but I did want to explore that conversation and offer that other resource as far as updates and things that are up and coming. Because we do want a world-class education.
I'll reach out, I've talked to her a couple of times. So, I will reach out to her and see, you know, what she might have on, on the table to help us update.
Right.
She's a board member in Malplis.
She is.
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of K-2 Scholastic Classroom Magazine from Scholastic for a total amount not to exceed $80,147, including a 10% contingency, and purchase of three through five Scholastic News Magazine from Studies Weekly for a total amount not to exceed $109,771.20, including a 10% contingency as presented.
My second.
Thank you. Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Now, our addition to the agenda, the discussion of birth of Os.
Raise the price. So, basically, you know, you remember that when those offers, you know, initially came in, they were in that a little bit above a million, a little bit below a million. And so, in discussions that Scott and I have had, we think obviously we kind of had the chance to see what the market was bringing. Now, that's for that particular type of development that I think that we've, obviously, we've heard from, from neighbors and stuff like that. But, you know, this gives us the option to maybe bump that up. Again, we can always look at offers that are less, and this doesn't exclude us from anything with that. But also, I think, gives a neighborhood of maybe what the board feels, based on seeing the market conditions a little bit, might feel it is. And so, I do have the form to sign if the board decides to go with that element. And again, seeing we have it as a motion item, you know, I would like, again, that understanding for the, to direct Scott and myself to have a discussion with the individual that submitted the current offer that's on the table to see what we can come up with and bring that back to the board next month. I'll have an update with Scott on where we're at with that or any other offer possibilities.
Are you looking for a specific dollar or just a discussion to allow the two of you to come up with a different price?
Well, I really would be, it would take a board action really in my mind to raise the listing price that was listed before. So, you know, I, my recommendation is a million dollars, but it's at 725 now. But again, that's completely the board's discretion on what you want to do with that. You know, you ask Scott any questions, he's your professional on this. I'm just kind of relaying as your middle person, you know, in this element of our discussions. But that's, I think, where Scott and I landed in thought to, to bring tonight to the board if the board wished to do it.
I actually would entertain the idea of 1.2 million, since that was the last offer that we had and we accepted. And the deal was not withdrawn because of any financial limitations, problems with the buildings. I think that's a fair market value for a housing development. So, I mean, you know, I would be open to that even.
Your discretion.
You know, an offer can come in lower, but if we put it at 1 million, it can come in even lower. So, I just want to make sure we get the fair value for, for the use of that property, whatever that use may be.
Scott, any feedback on that?
Um, yeah. Obviously, anybody that offers on a property has a vision for what they want to put there. They run a business plan and numbers to see what kind of return on investment they can get. The people at Strathmore that offered 1.2 obviously did their numbers. They spent $65,000 on their due diligence process in order to get to the plan that they proposed. That plan, while it met the criteria and, and the goals and objectives of the master plan for Acme Township, obviously didn't resonate with the neighbors. I think at 1.2, it made sense. I, I, I would be willing to concede at this point, the value of that property has dropped some, because we now have a pretty good idea of what will not fly, no matter what the master plan says or the township officials might have wished happened on that property. The reason I suggested a million is because that's somewhat equilibrium between the two or three offers, you know, two formal and one informal that I've gotten so far. And one of the parties that's interested at a million dollars doesn't necessarily have to redevelop the property. That's the reason I thought we'd at least start there. That it's, it's very difficult in real estate, as some of you may know, to come up on the price rather than down on the price. And while I know you'd like to dispose of this property and have the revenue from that, we do have a little bit of time. The carrying costs on that are fairly minimal, especially going into the summer months. So, what I'd like to do is to make sure we give the market a chance to react to a million dollars, to know that that's the price, so we don't get a lot of people trying to what we call lowball this process by coming in at 600 or 700,000. So, if we set it at a million, it will narrow the potential candidates for that property. And we can, as, as Dr. Van Wagner said, we can negotiate from there. I'd rather come down off the number than hope we get to go up. And, and we got lucky, I guess, that the first time we offered it up, people were willing to propose things that they thought met the criteria of the township and have found out that, while you might be able to do it by master plan, you certainly are not going to be able to do it by right if there's that much pushback in the township. Let me also say, and I should say this, I'm, I'm here in a business capacity, but I'd like to thank you all for serving on the board. Obviously, I was in your shoes for an extended period of time. And I know how difficult this is, because I know how many masters you have to serve when you make decisions like this. It's not as simple as somebody in business just going out and saying, I'll find the highest offer I can and we'll sell it to them and let them figure it out. Because of your community sensitivity, you have to serve the community nature, you have to serve the business side of this. You, there, there's any number of masters I know you need to serve. So, it's a balancing act, and I understand that. So, I, I'm recommending a million dollars. Is there magic to this? Can we do it based on comps? No, but we can, we've now established a market in Acme Township for the residents to come forward. If they don't want X and they do want Y, then are you willing to pay money to see that goal accomplished? And we've found out that there's at least one individual out there and probably several more that might be willing to do that. And that's kind of a win-win for everybody.
Well, I, I appreciate, you know, everything you've said, especially just your last statement as to putting a value on the, what does Acme Township, those community members want, as well as the township? And so, that really resonates with me. I, I don't want to see a building sit empty. It reminds me of feelings from Interlocken of, you know, a building that's centered in a community, nobody wants that. So, you know, I, again, like Andrew said earlier, we tried to go down the route with having a, you know, municipal or fire department and library and all of those things, which made a ton of sense. And yet, that wasn't supported enough for the township. So, it's a little bit frustrating that that's what they're saying they want, but then ultimately that, that the township doesn't, doesn't do that for their community. So, you know, I, I, I do understand raising the price. I, it's a little, you know, I mean, it's a little strange in this business, to be honest. But, but I'm trusting that, you know, that we've set that demand. And again, if we're asking for those to come forward to perform, then, then hopefully that's what we're doing. And, and again, you know, we want the best for that community. And, and no means do we, you know, want to see, like I said, an empty building sit and/or a project be developed that's not supported by its community. That's hard too. So, but we are paying 40,000 a month in our monthly expenses when it.
A year.
A year, I mean, a year, a year. Regardless, but that's, that's a lot. It's been sitting there for a while. And, and that's hard too, because that, to me, feels like we're not being fiscally responsible. So, I know I just probably talked to myself in circles. And, and I really do appreciate, Scott, everything you're doing. I know, obviously, you want the best for TCAPS, and that's why we hired you to represent us and.
Certainly do. Ultimately, this goes back into public education, whether it's a capital expense or curriculum expense, one way or another, it ends up back on your top line.
That's right.
And with the expense of having to monitor and maintain that building on an annual basis. I understand all that. I just don't think at this point, we ought to just grab something and call it good. I think there's an opportunity here to do better for TCAPS.
Yeah, and we had this conversation.
Yeah, and again, we have, you know, at least one individual involved that I think has some virtues that meet everybody's needs. And so, I'm interested in trying to work with Scott. At least to have a cup of coffee and talk with some different people that seem to call us around the same concept, see if there's something there, you know, towards the price point we're talking.
And in all honesty, it's sort of what we did with this building, right? We had a proposal that we had to kind of step back and say, okay, wait a minute, we're hearing from the community. And so, I appreciate that, and I think we do need to do that. I, I would hope we could do it sooner than later, just because.
We will work this schedule like soon, very soon.
Over the past few, you know, years, so, yeah, so that's all.
Yeah, I think this has been a year and a half since we first entertained.
Not to sound sarcastic, but I'm as incented to get this done soon as you are. I don't get paid by the hour, so.
Yeah.
But I want to make sure you get a good deal.
So, are you looking for a motion on the price? And I'm still confused, and?
Really, honestly, I only need a motion on the price. And, and then I just need a verbal from you guys that I'm headed down the right track here. And again, we're, we're just really, you know, tabling any more discussion or decision on the offer that sits at the moment while I go back with Scott to see what conversations lead us to.
With all parties who have expressed interest.
Correct.
Yes, and Acme Township.
And Acme Township.
So, I'd like to make a motion to approve changing the listing price to a million.
For birth of Os?
For birth of Os, yeah, effective immediately, tomorrow.
My second.
All right, thank you. Stacy, will you call a roll call vote?
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries.
So, to be clear, any of the offers that are there, I do plan on still bringing to the next board meeting, okay, for a decision. I'm just going to let you know what conversations took us to and be able to inform you of that.
Do you share the offer that you currently have?
Scott has it actually.
Okay.
Scott, if you could send that to them of the recent offer that you gave.
Can I send it to you for, Stacy, for disbursement to the board?
You can, you can.
I, I will tell you, it's 600,000, and, and the letter that accompanied it was, this is the beginning of a discussion and negotiation.
That was.
And his intent was to.
Yeah, I believe I sent it already. But, but we've had.
I'd be happy.
Some of us haven't had an email access yet, so.
I did, I don't have that.
Yeah, we're, because we're behind the students and stuff.
It was emailed to us yesterday.
Okay. Can we still ask Mr. Hardy a couple of questions?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so.
Do I need to get an attorney?
No, not at all. We're on your side. I just, I just want to ask about your insights on the master plan, because you've made a few references to that. And because we, our understanding had been that it, they would, that Acme Township would accept, I, I guess you call high-density housing. So, what changed there? What's their vision now? Are they, are they planning to amend their master plan?
Every community goes through a master planning process. I'm just trying to give you a 30-second explanation here. Traverse City is going through one right now, the city of Traverse City. And what you do is you typically leave it out for the citizens to react to what's called a draft plan and see what kind of response you get from the community. And if nobody complains or nobody has suggestions for revision, you move it towards approval at the township board level. They approved that plan in 2019. There's been no move recently to amend the plan. So, right now, in effect, in Acme Township is a master plan. That master plan designated the birth. That master plan designated the Birth of Voss property and surrounding properties as a higher-density district, sort of a township center approach where they would have some minimal commercial and higher-density townhomes, apartments, condos, whatever. And when we put this on the market, we told everybody that was interested to look at that master plan as a guideline or a signpost for where they wanted to eventually see that property develop. And we even asked them to go to the township offices and talk to the township supervisor and the planning director and confirm that that was indeed the master plan. That was their intention and that the community had vetted that and approved that plan, at least through the township council. They subsequently said, well, that was not, while we did that and that plan is in place, that's not necessarily our intention. You have to go by the existing zoning that's, that's on that site, which was residential, which allowed for ten, eight to 10 residential homes on that site. And that's, that's okay. Yeah, there's nothing legal that says that master plan has to, has to be adhered to and you have to be able to grant the change in zoning to accommodate it. We just thought that was a guideline and a signpost. And that's why this company spent sixty-five thousand dollars trying to put together a plan that met the criteria of that master plan. Obviously, it didn't work.
Okay. And then secondly, I just want to ask, is there a neighborhood association?
There is. I have not, I've talked to a few of the members. There's a group in Acme called Acme Strong, which is similar to other groups in other townships and even the city of Traverse City that coalesces about around the needs of specific property areas and what they think will or is or isn't appropriate for their neighborhoods. And they coalesced around the rumors that of what was going to go on the Birth of Voss site, and that's where all of the letters and vitriol came from to the township board and to the developer. And that's subsequently why they pulled their offer. And again, it, it's not something that ever got formally presented. So the, the, in, what they were going to do in actuality and what they were going to do by rumor were wildly different proposals. But sometimes you can't fight rumor.
Okay. Anything else? Scott, thank you for all your hard work on this.
Sure.
And to the residents of Birth of Voss community who have shown up to speak, thank you for your voices.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Stacy, do we have...
This is not a public comment, not right now. We, with that, if you would like to speak in public comment, we do, we'll have one in a minute. We will have one just a minute if you just wait.
Stacy, do we have any public comment for round two?
Yeah, do you have a, can you fill out a card?
All right, so the board has set aside this time for public comment. Individuals addressing the board shall have one opportunity to speak during public comment and shall be limited to three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system. We strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including complaint process, are outlined in Board Policy 0167.3. Please identify our public speaker.
Board, I came here tonight to listen. I'm concerned about one thing. I thought the board was about education of our people. Sometimes I hear things like that housing is more important than education. Now, which is it? We've got open borders, we've got newcomers that want to come to your home. I grew up in Acme. I was born and moved since 1938. They took me home. Our cow, Sweet Pea, pastured on the land where Birth of Voss is. As I understood it, my dad's cousin owned the land. His name was Harold Miller. He sold it to Fred Boss, who honored his wife with naming the school with her married name. She was a hoxie at birth. This man gave more than fifty thousand of real money, not the kind of money we have today, to honor his wife. I would like it if this group here would honor the man that cared about his family and the children that would come from Acme. I went through this system. We went to the Mason School in Acme, then we were moved by bus to Traverse City through our time. I was fortunate to be considered honors with my teachers. I headed for U of M and I found out there's other people that did well. It was sobering time. The man that sat on my right side burned up at the Cape. He gave his life for this country. Fortunately, I was honored to go to California and worked on the original design for the Atlas Missile. It was all secret then. I worked for senior engineers and Germans. They told us how to make it work. But anyhow...
Sir, I, I do apologize. We have a three-minute time limit.
Okay. Well...
Thank you.
Please honor Birth of Voss and keep it in the education group. Bye.
Thank you. Is that the end?
That's all public comment.
All right, thank you. So we are now at the next closed session portion of our agenda. May I have a motion for the board to go into closed session?
I move, I move to enter into a closed session for the purpose of conducting a periodic personnel evaluation as allowed by the Open Meetings Act, PA 267 of 1976, Section B 1A. The closed session was requested in writing by the employee.
My second.
Eight, eight, one, A.
Oh, eight, one, A. I'm, I, I, do I need to repeat that whole thing? Okay.
My second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, Stacy, roll call.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
And Trustee Humphries?
Yes, thank you. We are now in closed session.
Okay.
All right, so if there is no objection, we will return to open session.
No objection.
We are now in open session. All right. So I'd like to just thank everyone for their attendance tonight and to my colleagues on the school board and Dr. Van Wagner and Stacy, thanks for all the work that you guys do and the time you put into, to these important efforts. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I so move that we adjourn.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Have a nice night.